Welcome everyone, this is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is October 20th, 2020. Is there a motion to call a meeting to order?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Leads.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on the meeting mail is a letter for Frances Schmiede. I'm gonna defer that till DBW gets here later on, gentlemen. The next one is from the Police Department, from Chief Richmond. He's writing us to inform the Board of Selectmen some very good news. Last week, he was contacted by a longtime resident of Akushnet. This resident would like to make a monetary donation of $6,000 to the Police Department. The resident explained that she has lived in Akushnet for many years and come to know and respect a number of our officers in both past and present. She loves the town and wanted to do something to assist in keeping it safe. She indicated that she would like the funds to be used for something above and beyond that covered by the regular budget. Several months ago, the resident made a similar donation to Fire and Rescue Department. Chief Gallagher utilized the funds to install some much-needed auxiliary lights on the ladder truck, compliments of her donation. And while he has several ideas, the chief had requested the Board of Selectmen vote to accept his generous donation and be placed in the Police Gift Fund. This will allow time for the department to determine how to put the funds to best use. Is there a motion to accept the $6,000 and be placed in the Police Gift Fund?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would just like to thank this resident for a kind donation to the Akushnet Police Department as she did for the Akushnet Fire EMS Department. It's very generous of this resident to do such a thing. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming the resident obviously did it anonymously, didn't want any fanfare, but you know, Chief or Chief Richmond, we can maybe find, get her address. We could send her a letter of thanks or even a phone number, which we even, the three of us could call her personally. I think it's a really nice touch that she did for us.
Exactly. Okay. I don't have anything on the, it's CARES license fees. The last meeting, gentlemen, we spoke on this issue. We have businesses in town that weren't able to open at no fault of their own due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We had some discussions on possibly waiving some licensing fees. And Ms. Leonard's provided us a list. We have licenses that are eligible for waiving. Liquor license, all alcohol, liquor license club, restricted music license, entertainment license, automatic amusements license, public entertainment for Sundays, and hawkers and peddlers if the board so chooses, and common vic license. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I applaud you for raising it and I'm on board. I think it's the least we can do for these folks in the hospitality industry who are decimated right now and especially as the summer, uh, summer, as the winter months come along. Anything that we can do at a minimum to put money in their pocket, but also to show them that we're standing behind them. So I think it's a great idea and make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Maybe we can send a letter from the Board to these licensees, letting them know that we've...
Ms. Leonard, you have that list, correct?
Yes, I do.
And is this for the 2021 year?
Yeah, I would expect that we waive. Instead of being retro and trying to do all that, I think that would get a little confusing, right? Because they were already paid, so we'll, we'll...
Do it for 2021.
Exactly, for the 2021.
Perfect.
Did we approve those in December, I believe?
Yes.
In that effect? Okay.
So we'll still do the approvals, but there'll be no fees attached. But if you could go ahead and stop, Ms. Leonard, and send that out to establishments that have these licenses? Thank you. We have a town hall reopening planned. I think we've talked about some plans in the past.
While we're on first, did you want Chief Gallagher to talk? It was like the...
Oh, it's under the CARES, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, I'm gonna go back, gentlemen. So I'm under the CARES Act. Chief Gallagher, I, Chief of Fire and EMS is here. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
I'll start off.
Ms. Leonard?
Can I start off just by thanking you and your staff and EMA? I know EMA's playing a critical role with you.
Absolutely.
Out there doing the testing. So first of all, I'd like to start off with a congratulations and thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
It's a wonderful team to be a part of and they're doing some extremely good work.
They are.
And it's needed, very much needed.
There you go. So you have a couple of requests for the Board of Selectmen under the CARES Act?
I do. The first one is to replace one and broken washer and dryer that was donated by one of our members at Station 3 over on Middle Road. The washer and dryer serves the purpose of decontaminating uniforms. In the past, it was when you came back from a call in which bodily fluids splattered onto your uniform. You keep an extra set in your locker and wash and dry at the station as opposed to bringing that home. The importance of that washer and dryer now is tenfold with COVID. And part of our protection plan for the employees is to have them wash their clothing after every shift so that they go home with a sense that the clothing is clean. The dryer is on its last leg and from what they told me today, the washer is being held together by zip ties. So I'm asking, we priced out, the department has an account at Home Depot. We found one that seems to be reasonable and it is available. And if the Board approves the use of the CARE funds for that, we could potentially have it installed this weekend.
Is there, is there a motion to approve? Fire Chief's requesting the amount of $2,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. You've got 15 very happy folks who no longer will be going home smelly. The second request ties to the prevalence of COVID-19 in our community. As you know, if you've been paying any attention whatsoever, we are in the opening innings of a spike. Predicted, once the weather started to cool and folks started moving indoors, the numbers are gonna go up. And our previous high this spring was 46 confirmed cases by the Department of Public Health in Akushnet. Now it's back in the month of May. June was nine, great drop. July, 10, holding solid. August, bottomed out to four, which was our lowest. September crept up to 13. Here we are on the 20th of October and we have in excess of 30 cases to report. And that number is expected to climb. That's gonna keep us in the red for a third consecutive week. There's consequences to that that we were discussing this morning with the Board of Health Agent. Once a community is in the red for three consecutive weeks, there's certain privileges under the phases of reopening by the governor that are taken away. And then you have to remain not in the red for three consecutive weeks in order to earn those back. So at your charge, back in September, we started testing. And we've been pretty aggressive. The big ones were on the 10th of October, Saturday, we did 157 tests and last night we did 216. If we add all of the tests that we have done since you authorized us to begin in the middle of September, both the antibody tests that we do regularly with the teachers and the nasal swab tests were at 998. So we're closing in on 1,000 tests performed in a little over a month. Now, some of those are repeat customers, myself included. I test myself weekly. But the vast majority of those are to Akushnet residents who have stepped forward and we thank them so very much for that. Yesterday was an eye-opener. We had a big surge of people right at 4 o'clock and it lasted for a few hours. But we're able to get those 216 tests completed. They're off to the lab. And when I checked before I came down here, the results are starting to post on the portal. So folks can turn to the portal for that. But the winter months are coming. We were at, we took advantage of a very nice day last week. We went to Presidential Terrace, set up on their little gazebo area and were able to test 20 of the residents there. All came back negative. We want to continue to do that. We want to be able to go to the Council on Aging. We want to be able to go to different neighborhoods, if that's appropriate, or set up regularly in one of our parking lots. But with the weather turning bad, the opportunity to do it outside is being taken away from us. So the thought is, the state of Rhode Island has been pretty proactive with utilizing trailers that are pulled behind vehicles and then set up as freestanding units. The National Guard in Rhode Island was kind of at the cutting edge of this. And from there, several colleges have borrowed their blueprints and plans and have these testing trailers available on the colleges. I spoke with Lieutenant Colonel Tuttle, who is responsible for coordinating all of this type of equipment for the National Guard. He's forwarded me the vendor information and the blueprints as well. He gave me some insights as to what to look for. There are a couple of opportunities with some of the private colleges in Rhode Island that may no longer be utilizing theirs. So I'm at the, I'm on the diving board of this project. And what I would ask is an endorsement from the Board to continue to explore the purchase of a mobile trailer for COVID testing. One that could be repurposed when this pandemic goes away. Be it a hazmat trailer for the Fire Department or the Police Department or, you know, even the library. Put it to, put it to good use in some of the departments, I'm sure. Definitely the Board of Health as well. In talking with various folks, a budget not to exceed $50,000 for the purchase and retrofitting and the equipping. There's ventilation systems, heating systems, things of that sort that need to be installed. So my request tonight, so that we can move on this quickly, is to endorse the concept of a freestanding COVID trailer for the purpose of testing. Authorize us up to 50,000. The details obviously would go through Ms. Hebert to make sure that, you know, it meets the kind of financial constraints that the town is under and meets all of our requirements as well. So that is my second and last request for the day. Mr. Chairman?
So this, this mobile trailer, Chief, it'll, it'll be, you talked a little bit about ventilation. It's not equipped yet for $50,000 or is it totally equipped?
From what I understand, soup to nuts. With 50,000 would more than take care of it.
It's good to go, ready to step in and start testing?
Exactly.
And you, does it offer refrigeration unit inside as well? So you can keep these test units refrigerated? Because I believe you have to do that as well.
And there are standards by the Department of Public Health that it would be specked out to. So, you know, it would come with their imprimatur as well. And the idea is pretty simple. If we could pick a Saturday, two of our staff members go to Clem's Way and set up in the, you know, in the, on the driveway there. Just let the residents come down and get tested there and we can haul it to Presidential Terrace, Council on Aging, or wherever. Makes it more mobile. We don't want to be doing it inside of a building, but if we're inside of a unit that's built for that with the proper ventilation and protections, then it's a good opportunity to continue testing through the cold winter months when we will be needing to test.
Couldn't agree more. Gentlemen, is there a motion to approve for the amount of $50,000 for a mobile testing unit? Trailer, whatever you want.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. And if I may, just, I know time is precious. I just want to take 30 seconds. The testing and the whole COVID scenario is something that none of us expected. But I will tell you, in, I play a public role in providing this service, my department does. But there are so many people behind the scenes, from, you know, town administration to finance to payroll, who are having extra work put on their plate that nobody expected back in March. So for every tough test that is conducted, there was a contract that was reviewed by town council. It was time of juries to go through the contract and set up the parameters. There's invoices that are paid. And there's a whole team of professionals behind the scene that are working very hard to make sure that these type of projects. So while it's those of us in uniform who are the ones the public is seeing, for every one of us, there's five people behind us who are doing an extremely good job as well. So I want to make sure you heard that.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for the Chief. I echo the Chairman's comments earlier. Thank you for all you're doing and the work your team is doing. It's incredible. And we're focused, we're doing a lot of our focus on, you know, town hall and the schools, we're testing and Presidential Terrace. And it just occurred to me, you know, daily and every weekend, you know, a lot of people go to the golf course. And I'm just wondering if that's, you know, something that we've thought of as a way of just reaching out to the Golf Committee to see if testing there might be something to consider. I don't know if you get into the Akushnet resident versus non-Akushnet resident, but I just want to make sure we don't have a blind spot to the...
It's a very good, very good idea. One that, one that's not on the radar, but is now.
Do we, I think, I think that's a great question. Do we have, we have the ability, if you're here in town, utilizing one of our services to test a non-resident or no?
I made the decision that it would be, it would place our staff in a awkward position to deny somebody who has been standing in line to get COVID testing. And so we're not checking IDs. Now, have folks from out of town step forward? Yes. Usually they're connected with a teacher who works in town or, you know, another... There's a, there's an Akushnet hook besides the fact that...
I'm talking about the players that Mr. Wona suggested is the players that are coming in. I mean, it's a valid point. The players are coming in to our town. And if somebody, God forbid, if somebody did have it and they were asymmetric and they could be passing that along to our people. I'm asking, I guess the question is, is do we have the right? I mean, they don't, anybody can refuse the test, but...
Yeah, well, and it's all been voluntary. Even at the schools, we're not, we're not there where the school administration is looking to make anything mandatory. So this has all been voluntary. We're seeing an increase each week at the schools in the number of staff members that, we're probably in the high 80% of staff members that are taking advantage of the testing. But Mr. Chairman, to a point that you raised several weeks ago to me personally on a phone call. The town of Bourne, their Fire Department, their Fire Chief is a tremendous asset. And they are beta testing right now a rapid test, the saliva swab inside of your mouth by the same company that we're purchasing the antibody test from. And they expect final approval within a couple of weeks. We're looking at that. We'll be next on the list to beta test this. And if it meets all the requirements, we'll be able to shift from the antibody test in 10 minutes to a slightly longer 15-minute test, but it tells you definitively, are you infected or not? So it's as good as the nasal swab, but much quicker. So we could be shifting our whole paradigm pretty soon.
How about the expense? I mean, not that that really matters, but I talked to you a while back, as you just alluded to, towards these tests, these saliva tests that are coming out. And they are more rapid tests to be done. And I know the ones we're paying for now are $75 a test.
That's the nasal swab. We're paying $10 per test for the finger stick. And these would be comparable to the finger stick cost.
Wow, that's cheap. So you can do like four times the amount of testing with the same dollar amount?
Right.
And they're rapid, 15 minutes flat?
Exactly.
And you would have the capability to do that full-fledged test right there and get the results right there and no sending it out no more? That's awesome.
Yeah. Logistically, it might be tough with a large crowd because they gotta stand around for 15 minutes and wait for the results, but hopefully that's average.
If you form the line over there, we could form one over there for you to wait there.
Let me tell you, from experience just this week, it would be a lot easier to test a kindergarten student that way than it is to chase after them and try to stick something up their nose.
I would imagine. I'll keep up the great work and tell the staff that the Board of Selectmen truly appreciate all their hard work and dedication to our community. We really do.
Very good.
And I hope someday we could have a little ceremonial thing for them when this hopefully goes away.
We're looking forward to that day.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Before I leave the CARES Act, Ms. Hebert, do you have...
That's it.
Okay. The town hall reopening plan. We threw some ideas around last time, guys. And just, I think the, you know, figuring this out as we go, as everybody else is. Are there any ideas the Board wants to discuss? Or do we want to discuss it on a later date or...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think, you know, I just want to sort of clear the air a little bit. You know, I know we keep calling it reopening and opening or closure. But, you know, and I wasn't here during the, you know, the initial... You know, when this first one, you know, went down. But I think it's important for the residents to understand that we are open for business, right? It may be in different forms, right? We're open online. That's open 24/7, right? So people can get access, pay bills, do that stuff online. There's window opportunities. We've provided lobby, I think I'm gonna take a page out of the banks, how they communicated to people. You've got lobby hours and you've got drive-up hours, right? So we've got that. And we've put in, I think, first-in-class protocols with heat thermometers, sanitation, plexiglass, ring doorbells, appointment only. And so I think, you know, I would encourage people to, and the general public, to really understand what we're trying to accomplish here. And, you know, we want to keep residents safe. We want to keep the employees safe. But I think, you know, we've got a pretty broad menu of opportunities for, to serve the public. And I would encourage us to use everything, you know? It shouldn't be one thing or the other, right? So we're doing the 10 to 3 reduced hours, but that shouldn't preclude us from using window drive-up during, you know, windows during the course of the day or even during those 10 to 3 hours. I mean, 10 to 1, sorry, wish, 10 to 1, I keep saying that. But 10 to 1, you know, if we want to use the windows, we should use the windows or figure out how to make that a permanent fixture. Because perhaps residents don't want to be congregating in the lobby. We shouldn't assume that's where they want to hang out. So if we can use the assets that we have, I think we can serve the public. And if we ever get to a point where it's absolutely out of control, we can meet on an emergency basis, no different than we would a blizzard. And if we have to shut town hall down, then we shut it down, right? But we keep telling people, we're closed, we're reopening. We've been open for business all the way through. It's just in different shapes and forms. So I just want to say that. I think everybody's doing their best. The employees are doing their best. Residents are doing their best. And I think the public is getting served the best we can. And, you know, hopefully we can move on from this issue. Because I think everybody's doing the best they can.
I couldn't agree more. So I know, very well said. So I think that's basically 10 to 1 window that we're open now. It's working out. I know that we, Mr. Wona's saying that we keep the window service at the Collector's Office. Whether we want to do that longer all day, whatever it is, think about that. I know that if people call and they say, oh, I'm here and it's 1:30 and I can't get in the door. And there was somebody here yesterday at roughly 1:30 when I was leaving here. And they were looking through the Collector's Office window. So I think that that is a great point. Is maybe that window needs to be, you know, there's a sign on it saying, all you have to do is tap on the window or maybe we put a little doorbell or whatever. I think they can knock on the window, whatever they need to do and keep that service open all the time. And I think he's spot on. We're doing everything that we can physically. I mean, possible to do it with everything that we've done. I mean, like you said, the kiosk machines, the plexiglass shields, mask-wearing internally, the ring doorbells to all the direct offices that people want to speak to. As long as our employees are here to serve the public from 8 to 4, I don't see an issue to complain.
And I will add too, we're extending our window service. There's a window being added for the town clerk. She's obviously another high-volume office. The building department has one now too. So we're, we're working to expand it as much as possible to make sure people can be, can be reached.
Excellent.
And I can see this month, tax bills are due and then I guess water bills are due coming up. So we're gonna get a lot of activity of any office in the Treasurer Collectors. And then, of course, we have early voting.
Yes.
They've been very busy up there. I've been by the last couple of days and they've been very busy in and out of there. And they're doing Town Clerk's Office, doing a good job with that, making sure they're monitoring how many people are coming through the doors and things of that nature and hand sanitizing. I walk through the door, I hand sanitize, by temperature check.
So the Selectmen, there was a good point about the tax bills and the water bills, right? So we know that we're gonna have tax bills and usually the first day, second day, people get them or the week before. Is there anything that we can do proactively to encourage people to either use the drop-off, right? But also, I mean, again, I'm thinking outside, trying to think outside the box here. I know Chief Gallagher has utilized, called firefighters to do disinfecting, right? I'm just wondering if on that first day, we had a team of people outside, provided the weather was good, to be able to take, you know, set up some type of outside component to it if the weather was okay or... I'm just, something to think about. You don't have to make that decision now, but just, we know it's coming, right? And if we keep people from coming in the building, set something out, you know, where do we need, you know?
I think more, I think, I think you said it perfect. I'm afraid from the beginning, Selectmen Wona, that a lot of our people in the public understand that this is a virus. It's a pandemic. And I think that a lot of people, I think you said it best. A lot of people are probably more comfortable with using the window service than coming in the doors. There are some people that may, I mean, if it's raining and there's a blizzard, people are probably gonna want to come in. That's fine. We got all the safety protocols in place and do such. But, I mean, I think it's even faster if you just walk up the sidewalk, hit the window, thank you very much, stamp it, see you later, gone. So I, I mean, I think we're there. I think we're in a good place. I know we're in a good place. We've done a great job and I know cases in Akushnet are going up and I know all the states measuring things and, you know, like the Chief just said, something about three weeks in the red and then you gotta wait till your three weeks. But I mean, give me a break. I mean, again, it goes back to that infection rate and those first five days, in the, in 20 days goes by, 15 days go by, those five people gotta come off. If there's five people in the first five days, those people should be dropped off the list. So you shouldn't be flagged and keeping it as a tally for the month because they say it's 15 days. So I think that the systems that people are utilizing just gets a little skewed, a little cockamamie. And I mean, I looked at the maps today from mass.gov. There's a lot of communities with hundreds of cases in the last 14 days, 50 cases that are similar size to ours, 30. I mean, they're all over the map. There's some that are doing a lot better than us. Matapoison Marion are less than five. They're doing great for Havens, right around where we are. So I mean, they got a population 15,000, we got 10,000. So I mean, they got a population 15,000, we got 10,000. So, you know, you, you can't really just do it by the number of cases. I think it's more of the infection rate. But we'll, I think Mr. Wonar said it perfectly, the way he said it and I, I like that. I think that's the plan. We ought to stick with it, Selectman Wonar's proposal and just stick with that. And if we do end up seeing this dramatic spike where it's, it's, you know, we're all concerned about it, we'll, we'll have a meeting.
React accordingly.
And we'll, and we'll move on that. We can do it instantaneously really through the town administrator. She can notify us and we'll be talking about it. And we'll be, everybody here is watching the cases. And if we get to that dangerous level, perceived dangerous levels where there's a massive spike, we'll, we'll take action accordingly.
And Mr. Chad, just to remind the people, you can pay electronic fund transfer from your checking account at 25 cents.
That's right.
Cheaper than the price of a stamp. Or you can just drop it in the silver box at the bottom of the ramp and be applied accordingly.
Yeah.
So that is, you know, we do have to adjust in these times.
You have a check or?
Yeah.
However you want to do it, credit card, over the phone? We, we have that capability, Missy, but can I? Cause I know in my business, when I ran my business, I could take a credit card and know we're over the phone, just like that, be done with the transaction in literally two minutes flat.
Yeah, there is a, there is a higher fee.
Yeah, you have the credit card, like the 3% or whatever the fee might be for the credit card, but yeah.
There was, there was, there was a fee.
High.
So.
But that's not charged, well, it wasn't charged by, I paid it as a business. I paid the fee.
Yeah.
So I know our online bill pay, the customer pays that percentage.
Yeah, through the demo code.
Like, like Mr. George said, it's cheaper if you can to use your checking account. It's 25 cents for the whole transaction. So if you do that, that's the preferred.
I think I, I paid mine online. Do we, does a, does a reminder email come out to once you're in the system?
Um, I think so. I think it does.
I don't know.
I'll, I can find out.
I got, I'm gonna have a property in Bedford. And when the water bills due, it comes out and then I just literally have everything.
Okay.
On there and I just, all I have to do is hit a button, boom, taxes come in, boom. So if, if we're not at that point, that might make things really easy for people. I don't think so, cause I, I don't recall seeing it and I've done a couple of.
Okay. You've got a great idea. Let's look into that and see what we can do if there's, if there's something out there.
There's a better system, you know, if we're using an integrated system.
Yeah. I know the treasurer's talked before about switching to a different online pay system. So that could be it.
And, and, and for everybody at home, we understand it's not all about paying a bill. I definitely get that. I've had a lot of conversations with residents and I understand that. And there are needs that people have to communicate with somebody in whatever office it may be. We get that. And that's why you can do it via appointment or the 10 to 1 window of opportunity to come through there. Maybe we open that window up as things get better, but we're not there. We're not getting better right now. Hopefully we will. But I, I like Selectmen, I, Monas approached this and I think we should stick with that until we know more. All right. Everybody good with that?
Very good.
All right, yeah. Moving on. We got something here, COVID-19 updates.
Um, I think.
I think I have anything on that, Missy.
No, I, I mean, this was on here as kind of a placeholder just to talk. I, I know the fire chief was here and talked a lot about it as well. We've all been discussing it in general. Just to make sure the public is aware that we are in the red category. Our, the, the updates from the state come out weekly on Wednesdays. So as of last Wednesday, our average daily incident rate per 100,000 was 13.7. Like the chairman has said, some of the numbers might be harder to follow, but it's really important for residents to understand that our numbers are high. And it impacts a lot of our local businesses. We sent out this flyer. Hopefully everyone saw it last week at the end of the week. When we're in the red category for the three consecutive weeks, it does have an impact on our local restaurants, for instance. We go from phase three, step two, back to phase three, step one. I know offhand it, it impacts bar service and things like that. So and I'm sure, you know, who knows what the state will come up with from here for metrics. So it's really important. A lot of this comes down to your personal health practices and making sure that you're continuing to wear masks, stay socially distant because your, your actions implicate a lot more for the community. So just making sure people are aware of that. And I think we did a reverse 911 call last week and I'd like to continue that on a weekly basis. Just so that we can remind people about, you know, these changes with town hall, or not changes, but letting them know that, you know, we have the window open. We have payments at the drop box, reminding them that the numbers are going up and, and kind of keeping that in people's minds every week. So if that's all right with you guys, I'd like to continue that as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
Once a week works, not two or three times a week.
Yeah.
I know there was a little bit different message, but once a week works.
You got it.
Just as a communication device, right? All right. Anything else, Missy, but on the COVID-19 updates?
That's all I have.
All right. New business, library update. We haven't spoke with Ms. Deena Brassa for a little bit. It's a pleasure to see you.
It's a pleasure to see you all. Thank you for adding me to your agenda today. I'm just going to give you a brief update on your outstanding local resource, your public library. As you know, we started a takeout service at the library back in June. We started with 24 hours of service at our takeout window. And by the end of July, due to demand, we bumped that up to 38 hours per week for, of service. And that includes four evenings and Saturdays. We're normally open, the building is normally open 44 hours a week. And I think you made a great point, Selectman Wonar. We're, we're definitely open for business even though the physical building is shut. And like you all, we, we were open the whole time too, just in a different way. So even though we're only doing the takeout service for 38 hours, we're close to that 44 hours. And we may even get to that 44 hours, who knows? Staff is approximately, in the building approximately 60 hours a week. So we're answering the phone even when we're not doing takeout. And we're providing, you know, reference over the phone through our, we have multiple email accounts that we answer and two social media accounts that people message. So even when we're not doing the takeout, we're still very actively working with the public. Yes.
Just for the residents, what are your hours, have you have, as they are established right now?
So the takeout hours are Mondays and Wednesdays from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. Fridays, 1:00 to 5:00 and Saturdays, 10:00 to 2:00. And staff is in the building Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Fridays, 9:00 to 5:00, Saturdays, 9:00 to 3:00. So we're, we're there a lot. And, you know, on Sundays, someone is often checking the email and online accounts also, you know. So you, you're technically getting service seven days a week with us. So how the takeout works, just to give you a sense, is that people essentially have access to anything that's in the building. And if it's in the building, that means it's readily available and we can have it ready for you in 15, 20 minutes. And you just make an appointment to come to the window and it's, it's in the community room. The takeout window runs along our deck ramp. So people just walk right up the deck ramp. They go to the wind, if they have returns, they go to one window. If they don't have any returns, they just go to the pickup window. And then they go down the stairs in the back to their vehicles. It's pretty simple. If we don't have what they're looking for in the building, then we can get items from other libraries within the network as always. And the statewide system for sharing resources just reopened last month after shutting down in March. So really we have access to the entire state's collection and that really is a huge help when people are looking for obscure things sometimes. That comes in handy. We are quarantining whatever comes into the building, either through delivery or returns. We're quarantining those items for seven days. Thanks to the DPW, they lent us recycling bins. And so if something is returned on a Monday or arrives in delivery on a Monday, it goes in the Monday bin. We shut the lid and then following Monday, we open it up and go through that all and process it. So the wait time can be seven to 10 days when normally it was maybe three to four days. So we understand the wait time's a little bit longer, but it's, I think everyone's, like you've just discussed. They're used to having to make accommodations right now. We've checked out over 7,500 items since June through the window. We've handed out over 1,000 craft kits. These are just little kits the staff assembled with simple projects, the supplies and the instructions for families to take and then make at home. So those are really popular over the summer. We were handing them out once a week and now we're doing them monthly. But people love coming to the window and picking up something like that. We're also doing printing, faxing and photocopying at the window. So if you have something to print, you can email us. We'll print it for you and let you know when to come get it. You can come to your window with a fax or we, if you come to the window, we can hand over whatever you have. We can make the photocopies for you. Normally we charge a very small amount for that, but back in June when we started takeout, we decided not to charge anyone anything just as a safety measure. So we weren't handling cash. But now it just seems like a nice thing to do for people. You know, it's, we were really, we're only charging 10 cents a copy anyway. So at the end of the day, it seems like a better thing to just say, hey, no, that's on us and good luck. So a lot of things that people are coming to print are critical things, like an application for an apartment. They're trying to get forms they need to fill out for medical reasons. So it's just easier to say, there you go. We are doing computer use by appointment. So if someone needs to use a computer, they can schedule a time to come in the building to do that. We offer 45-minute sessions. When they make the appointment, we lay everything out to them, what's expected when they get there. There's a mask or face covering. Needs to be worn the whole time. We also have the temperature check kiosks that they have to stop at. And if all goes well, then they just proceed to the computer. It's ready for them to use. We sanitize between use. We can even swap out the keyboard, the mouse, the chair. Whatever, you know, we need to do to make everyone feel safe and comfortable coming in, using computers. I say this all the time. People think, oh, no one needs a computer anymore. Everyone's got a smartphone or has their own computer. That is not the case. And you cannot update a resume right now if you have it on flash drive. You can't update that with a smartphone because you can't plug your flash drive into your phone. So you need a computer in order to do that. And so we've had at least half dozen people come in so far to update resumes. We've had people come in to fill out unemployment forms, other forms and something, you know, we can't do for them, but they can come in and, and do that. Um, once a day. And that's going really well. We normally have five public computers. We had to drop that down to two to maintain the six feet of distance between the two terminals. Our digital collections, that use has skyrocketed since March. Acushnet cardholders have downloaded thousands of books, movies, music. We have two digital platforms and the usage is up 150% from last year. And we imagine as we go further into the colder months, that that usage will continue to rise. We know it's not the same as it was before. We totally get that. We know there are people who want to come in and browse. They want to come in and socialize, but we just aren't there yet. We don't feel. You know, a couple of weeks ago I thought, oh, we'll be there and, no, we're not there yet. But we'll browse for you. If there's something you want and you don't know what it is, you call us. We'll walk to the new book table. We'll tell you every single title that's there. We'll rid you of the back jackets. We'll go through the movies and tell you what we have. We're happy to be, you know, do the visual work for you since you can't come in. We have parents who are homeschooling who have never homeschooled before and they're coming to us where they're go-to resource for books on homeschooling. We have quite a few grandparents who are remotely through FaceTime and Zoom, reading to their grandkids. And they, because they haven't been able to see them in person, so they're coming to us for books to do that. And we also just have people who are, you know, being encouraged to stay home and they're getting a little bored with that. So stay at least. And especially as we proceed into the winter and people may be encouraged to do that a little bit more. Just come to us, stock up, get what you need and at least you have something to do at home, right? Something different. But it was really important to me to just to give you this quick update today because I do think communication is key. You know, Julie and I are in touch a bit. I'm in pretty, like, frequent contact with Board of Health Agent. And, you know, it's just wanting to be on the same page as everyone else and wanting you to know where, where we're at. You know, like Chief Gallagher said, everything is a team effort. You know, the building department built our trays. They put up our plexiglass. The fire department, you know, has procured all this PPE for all of the departments that is a huge, you know, thing. The fact that we have access to these wipes and masks and the whole lot. And it's just the, the temperature kiosk, the whole thing. The DPW for the recycling bins. But it all helps to make everyone just feel confident, safe. The employees coming to work and then the residents who are using the service. So when you're thinking about good service in your town, please remember your library is here. We serve everyone. It doesn't matter what age you are, you know, what your status is, whatever. Any, you want us, we're here for you. And I just think it's really important that everyone.
I can say this, I know that you're busy because I live right up the street and I see the cars going in and out of that place constantly.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
It's been pretty neat.
Says a lot about you and your staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you and.
No, thank you all. I appreciate it.
What Acushnet's all about, right? And we gotta keep it that way.
That's right.
So if everybody just does their part, we'll, we'll continue to keep Acushnet great. So.
Moving forward, right?
That's what it's all about.
Great. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I did it. Thank you.
MAGA.
Make Acushnet great again.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we got a.
Tell you, I'm glad I got this mask on.
The ZBA call for members here. So I, there's a little note on mine and it says alternate one year. Does that mean we need an appointment? Or we just call in for people that are interested to be on ZBA or what's the deal?
Yeah, so ZBA right now has one vacancy and it's for the alternate position. And I believe they've had some difficulty getting a forum at a lot of their meetings. So having the alternate position filled in would be a big help to their group, I think. I don't know if you want to call it for people interested or?
Sure. There are motions to, I don't think we need a motion, right? We can just advertise on the website and that we have an opening for an alternate for the Acushnet Board of Appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals for an alternate. It's a one-year appointment lease.
Yes.
That way, yeah, there's no.
Yep.
There you go. So the Acushnet has an opening for an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. If anybody's interested, please submit, submit a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Leonard will make sure that the Board of Selectmen get it and we can take that up. We want to give it a window or if we get the right candidate in the next two weeks, we can do it in two weeks. If not, we usually go 30 days for an opening. But we got a good, good qualified candidate that's familiar with the bylaws and they have interest, let's do it. We just put it on the website. So where we have all the openings, we have a little spot for openings, right?
Volunteer services.
We got a Lake Street Improvement Appointment, Mr. Roger Nado. He lives on Lake Street. He says he's interested in all the projects for Lake Street. He's interested in becoming involved with the, to save the lakes in the beautiful area of the town of Acushnet. He goes on and on and length about he's been a resident for nineteen, since 1973, a very significant amount of time. He like, we would like the appointment. He's got a lot of interest in this. He's very concerned about the ponds at Lake Street. Mr. Wonar, you are the, you're the big owner there and bring it on. Welcome. Welcome. We would make a motion to appoint Roger Nado to the Lake Street Improvement Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Nado, and thank you very much.
Send him a letter.
Yep. I think he left the phone. You can just call him, whatever. It wouldn't, Mr. Wonar. Cultural Council appointments. We have several of them. And I'm just gonna go right through them. I'm just gonna ask for a motion to appoint Linda Gilbo, Jaclyn Berger. I hope I said your name right. Janine B. Watts, Stephen Watts to the Cultural Council. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Best. Can you send those four individuals? And thank you very much for wanting to be involved. It's great when people step up to the plate. All right. Department of Public Works. We have Mr. Manad and Ms. Silva. We got a gift tonight. I don't know, we got both of you. All right, so.
Would it be okay if I, I talk first?
Sure. Ms. Silva, welcome. Mr. Manad, welcome. Oh, yeah, let's try to take this up front. My copy, it just went on and on.
Well, I don't know, I didn't know it.
So I guess the.
At least you wanted Julie.
I'll take one, please.
Yeah, you can keep that for, for copy. So I, I deferred on the meeting mail, Francis Street water pressure issue. I'm just gonna run through this real quick, Ms. Silver. And if I misspeak or you have anything to add, please do. DPW has gone out. This resident has been complaining numerous times, both with Ms. Silver and with Ms. Leonard, the Board of Selectmen's Office of Low Water Pressure. Well, we've sent out our water guy.
We sent out the, the, our water technician.
Three times.
He's been out there three times. He went to the house to check everything the first time and did not find any low water pressure on the outside. Checked on the inside and he, he tried to tell the resident that, you know, you need to change out the filters. Need to deal with the pipes because the water pressure coming in the house is fine. At that point, he checked, actually he went to a few of these houses on Francis Street just to see how they all were doing. And he didn't find any issues outside of the house, again, on any of them. But one of the residents kept complaining of the low water pressure. So Mr. Manad and his team then went out and actually blew out the line in the street to see if that would help them at all. And Mr. Manad said it's probably not gonna help, but, you know, the, the, the issue's probably more in the house. So we had the technician go back two more times and this report you're seeing was at 10, 11:30 this morning. He went and checked the water pressure. And what he did was he turned on three of the houses and let the water run and checked the pressure before he did that and after. And as you can see, the pressures were not below 32 pounds with every one.
So the individual, what I found very confusing is, first and foremost, so everybody at home understands, the municipality has to maintain nothing less than 20 PSI in its water infrastructure. Is that correct, Mr. Manad? These, this particular street has 66 PSI in the water infrastructure there. So it's not a water infrastructure problem by any stretch of the imagination. The individual's complaining has 58 to 60 while other homes were turned on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And he's the first one off the, off the main water line. And he's got 58 PSI. That's like unheard of in the town of Acushnet, in any places that I know of, that I'm aware of. Cause we've done a lot of water pressure tests. Mr. Manad, you were directed by the Board of Selectmen before Deep Brook Estates took place. We held that back from the planning board. We went out and did a pretty comprehensive water testing study out there. And we were, I think the lowest was somewhere around 28 PSI. Though that is a concern area when you start getting to that threshold, close to 20 PSI. With that said, gentlemen, I, there's nothing more that we could do for this resident. Again, 58 PSI is astonishing PSI for somebody to have at the house. I would suggest either Ms. Silver or Mr. Manad, you can contact this resident. And I guess the only recommendation I would have for this resident is to call a plumber and have somebody go internally into the house and check all their lines, filters, if they have any filter, water filtration systems in the house. And check their lines, that the rubber lines, because they could be clogged with calcium and things of that nature. Over the years, a few. Over the years, if you don't change those little flexible lines that go to your faucets and things of that nature, or even a copper line could be coagulated on the inside. Um, after so many years of use, um with calcium, so it could be blocking off his pressure, I don't know. But I know that we've done our job in testing the outside of this house and it's phenomenal that he's got fifty-eight PSI. There's no more that we can do, replacing pipes in the street isn't gonna do anything because the people that have thirty-three and thirty-two PSI when things are turned on are not complaining and nor should anybody complain. Um, unless we were to breach that level of twenty PSI, twenty-five PSI would kind of be starting to raise flags for us and we would have to go out and do more thorough inspections. So, with that said, I don't think there's much more we can do for that resident.
Okay, thank you.
Great, the first thing we got on here is some articles. I I I would like you to discuss your articles if you if you don't mind tonight. Um, I I threw you on the agenda and I allowed that to be on the agenda, I know next Wednesday we're discussing articles. But I figured while we're in here and I don't wanna take Dan away from working out and doing things that he needs to do with the projects he's doing. Because I know he's on a tight schedule before the season ends, so I didn't wanna pull you off your schedule, Mr. Manad, so.
Do you wanna do the winter, the senior winter first, the water abatement?
Um, sure, we can, we can, um, so I asked um Ms. Silver to consider a senior winter water abatement program, gentlemen. This this is really for the seniors that take off for the winter or for several months. Um, I've had some conversations with quite a few, you know, call it a half dozen residents that take off um to Florida or wherever they go, Arizona, I don't care where they go, but they they take off. Um, and they have no water usage whatsoever. So, they asked if there was any way that that the Board of Selectmen could provide some relief on that water bill. Um, after having some conversations with the residents and Ms. Silver and Mr. Manad. Um, we've come to the conclusion that it would be pretty easy for us to waive as long as the resident contacts Ms. Silver or Dan in the DPW office and notifies them when they are leaving and when they come back. We can then do a meter read right from her, the BTU system or whatever that thing's called if they have. And she can monitor it, make sure there's no water usage, we still charge the twenty-dollar depth fee, we still charge the five-dollar meter fee. Um, but we won't charge the minimum use fee on the billing for that month or two months or three months, whatever it may be.
Correct, so what I will do is, um, some people like to have the water shut off in the street, which we would do. Other residents prefer that it stays on the street and they maybe shut it off in the house and keep somebody's checking on the house. It's great to shut it off in the house because, and then contact me, because if you're gonna go away for three months and I put that note and I actually mark it as vacant. So, my system says this address had usage and you say it's vacant, so that's a red flag. Which is great because God forbid somebody has a pipe break or they let, somebody went to check on the house, they left the water on by mistake, pipe breaks. We actually had a went to, we saved three houses just with this water system because we were able to check and and the next morning I was like, oh. Start calling, start sending the guys out, they're like, there's nobody here, I'm like, shut that water off. So, it's a great system and it's better if we know, the more that we know, the better because we can protect the houses while you, everybody's away. And then what I'll do is I will, there'll be no minimum fee of usually, it's thirty dollars and we charge five hundred cubic feet and these people are working, using like nothing. So, they'll get no use, water usage charge. And like I said, they just need to notify me, call the DPW, email us and let us know when you're leaving, when you're coming back. And a lot of people do it anyway because they'll they'll change their addresses, but I don't think a lot of people don't take advantage of it. So, that would be great.
So, this 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 is basically for seniors, senior abatement program.
Sounds good, man.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the senior winter water abatement program?
So, moved.
Just instituted by this board.
That's wonderful.
Is there an age, sorry, can you hear this enough?
I don't know, what do they consider a senior, I mean, I turned fifty and I got a triple A cut or something.
Are you gonna have like a form that they thought or just?
Yeah, I I could, I would, I'll put something on the website, I mean.
Cuss on aging probably has some guidelines as to what that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're gonna get too caught up on that.
Well, and we only, we don't have, we don't have a lot and I can basically tell when I do the the billing in in March. I can see who's not there because I wanna report because I wanna know why there's no usage on some houses. So, I I can, I always go through all my zero usages for two reasons. Number one is, does somebody living there was a vacant and sometimes people leave the keys and walk away, it's good for us to know that. Um, the second thing is, is it a frozen meter? So, I didn't charge them any usage and we have a problem with the meter, I need to get a technician and then maybe change it. So, I'm constantly looking at their usages and it's not a huge amount of people that would take advantage of this anyway. So, my guess is most of these people are gonna be over the age of sixty.
Yep.
By the time they're retired.
I'd say probably, that's probably a good enough number to use, but. I I mean, I know it's not, it's not a lot for us, for the town.
No.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna equate to peanuts for dollars, but it's a lot to a senior citizen, so that's what we're trying to do.
It's a big.
Um, in the town of Acushnet, um, we have other senior um abatement programs, they can they can be involved in. Um, I think the CPC is one of them, Selectmen Wonar, back in the day, we did that one years ago. Um, as a, an abatement program where if they don't feel like they wanna pay the CPC charge that's on their tax bill, we waive that as well. So, this is just something to complement it and helping us seniors in the community out.
Thank you.
There was a motion made, all those were in favor, so.
Thank you, I think that's one.
Thank you, Ms. Silver.
I'm just gonna talk about the first two articles and then Mr. Manad will take over.
Okay.
The first article that we have is for a seventy-one thousand five hundred for risk and resiliency assessment and an emergency response plan. This is a new requirement by the EPA that is due for small utilities on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This is something that's brand new to us, uh, and this is EPA, we've actually never had to file with EPA for anything before. So, we need to file risk and resiliency and what they are looking for is, they're looking for information on natural hazards, um, anything that could basically look at worst case scenario, if if the worst thing happens, um, some kind of a natural disaster, some kind of. Right, I actually talked to EPA because I said, you know, we get our water from New Bedford. And they said, well, we wanna see on there what happens if New Bedford has an issue and can't give you water. That's gonna be a big thing for us to have to think about. So, they said, we just kinda wanna plan, we wanna know what you think your major issues are, they can be financial, they can be um a New Bedford issue, they can be a natural hazard. So, the risk and resiliency is, these are your issues. And then the emergency response plan, which needs to be done six months later, is, okay, here are your issues, how have you decided you're gonna handle them all?
Yep.
So, and then this has to be updated and certified every five years. I'm asking for money to do this to work with Woodward and Kern, I've worked with Woodward and Kern, CWMP and the INI. At this point, we're at a six-month window to get this done, they said that they can work with me and we can get this done in six months.
Can they work with you and get the number down, seventy-one thousand?
I can try.
That might, you know, Carol's actually, she might work.
Yeah, we can work with them, so.
I mean, you know, it, the the problem that I I've had over the years, and I know that they've been the engineering firm that the town's used for a while, but sometimes we people get complacent when they do business with you, I was a businessman for numerous years, I still am today. Um, and sometimes when you do business over and over, people get complacent and they just, the charges just seem to be irrelevant at that point. But I would argue that the longer I'm in business and the longer my business relationship is with you, I should be getting better and better deals, right, when I'm doing things. So, I would just ask, I mean, it's fine that we're gonna appropriate this money, doesn't mean it mean that we need to expend it all. And I would just ask that we kinda look around and see what other people, communities our size and what they're spending and how they're handling it. It's kinda like the MS four permitting that we're gonna get involved with in the near future. There's a lot of good programs out there, so I just don't wanna just say, oh, it's because the engineering firm said so, here's a check for seventy-one thousand dollars. It's all of our jobs to look over the taxpayer dollars um as much as we can and utilize those funds as best as we can. Um, and be frugal about our spending, so I would just ask that we, you know, the appropriation's there, I know it's an estimate that we were given, but, you know, let's see what we can do and.
Absolutely.
Always keep the pressure on is what I'm saying, that's what makes a good business person, is you're just gonna keep that pressure on. Just because it's coming from taxation doesn't mean that it's just an open checkbook.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you.
I can do that, you're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, I agree, I read through some of the stuff, uh, Ms. Silver, I mean, I I had those same concerns, some of the ones you mentioned about us us getting ominous of water from the city of New Bedford, so I guess, you know, maybe it'd be a good idea to take a peek at what the city of New Bedford's doing, right? And their.
Yep, I actually, I actually have that plan, it's um, it's this long.
Wow.
That's their plan because, you know, they they.
Yeah, well, it's a city of a hundred dollars, right?
It's a city and they and they also supply towns, so they have to have a huge, they have to file early because they're so big. So, that's one of the things that I will obviously put with our certification is their plan as well because our plan is very dependent on them staying in business. So, that's a huge thing.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why I'm saying for the seventy-one thousand dollars for the small municipality that we are, we don't have those, some of the things that are mentioned in here with, we don't.
We're not treating water.
We don't treat water, we don't have a lot of treatment facility, they do, we all know that, we get it from them. So, I mean, I'm just looking at that expense going, well, what are you gonna look at, the way we build people? I know our infrastructure's out there and there's some concerns there as well, but I mean, sounds like a big chunk of change.
Right, absolutely, that that price also will cover the emergency response plan.
And we don't have a choice to do it, well, to do it, right?
Do it, yeah, and my other thing is I just wanted to mention was, once we have a plan, I took an eight-hour webinar class with the EPA that they talked to us. So, I I needed to wrap my head around what they were really asking us for. And so, I think if I can get a good plan and work with an engineering group, then in five years when we have to recertify, I can take this plan and we can discuss it. You know, Mr. Manad and myself, the water technicians, you if you'd like, and 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 not have to go out and get any, spend any more money, we can update ourselves. We're smart enough that we're gonna know, this is our problems, have anything changed, have we improved anything? And just re-update our plan and recertify, because it's only every five years.
I'm I'm confident that you're gonna handle that just fine.
Thank you, thank you.
I am.
So, that's the first article. Second article is um the school, we're asking for the surplus money back from the sewer for the hundred and ten thousand from the school budget. That was um taken out from Article fifteen, uh, annual town warranty to June fifth, two thousand seventeen. That was for the sewer pump that was put in to service where we thought we were going to use it to actually extend our sewer lines in that area. Uh, come to find out, we cannot use it for anything.
Stuff doesn't roll uphill, as I've said before.
It's not gonna work.
It's too bad, all those years went by.
I know.
And they told us, yep, 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 yep. And finally, somebody pushed the button enough times, no, we can't tie in. You could, but you'd be putting it in another pumping station, right?
Exactly, you run into problems, that's not.
That wasn't the deal we made, we struck a deal to take up half that cost of this, the new upgrade, we upgrade both of those pumps, Mr. Manad?
Correct, the whole.
Both pumps at the schools, so the deal was, for everybody at home watching, the deal was is we would split that cost, which we paid an additional ten, it was two hundred and ten total, right? We picked up a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the sewer surplus account, assuming that that money would be paid back to the sewer surplus account as we tied sewer users in, that money would then come back to the sewer surplus account. Then we found out from pushing that button enough times that we can't tie anybody else into that pipe unless we put in another pumping station at some point to push it up because it's a gravity line, um, it would feed back to the pumping stations at the schools in overwhelm. So, all we're doing is technically, we wanna be refunded for the sewer surplus account, the hundred and ten thousand dollars that we expended, um, and get that money back.
Correct, that's right. The school is in general fund and as you all know, but public may not, and the sewer has its own surplus and we only have nine hundred and eighty-two, nine hundred and eighty-two residents, um, households on sewer.
There's no way we can get that money back unless we get the money back from the from the general fund and that's where it needs to come from. The deal was is if we can utilize it, we found out that we can utilize that money. So, there's no question that money needs to come back to the sewer users, um, because it's their money, it's not from taxation, you're absolutely right, that is an enterprise fund.
And that's their money.
We did it in good faith, assuming that we were gonna be able to do X, Y, and Z and bring that money back in plus to the sewer surplus and we can't. So, now that money needs to be refunded back to the sewer surplus, so.
That's why.
Mr. Deroche.
Was I correct in hearing you, we have nine hundred and?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, so under a thousand out of four thousand homes?
Yes, or on, or on, tied on sewer right now, correct.
Okay.
Yep. So, those are my two articles, Mr. Manad is gonna take over for the next one.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, mine is the, the first one is for the front-end loader. This is the John Deere loader, um, you got any questions? It's a currently a two thousand two loader we have, so it's eighteen years old. Um, I don't think I did, did we give them the new updated list, uh? Nope, we didn't. You guys wanna make copies, I have one with me.
That's okay, Dan, we can just, we'll get that later on from you guys, let's talk about the loader because you brought this up and we weren't able to do it at the last town meeting. Um, so, we're talking about it now because winter's coming.
Correct.
So, I mean, I can talk about it, you can talk about it, I I've I've been with this, been with the DPW and trying to do as much as I can to keep that DPW as equipped as possible to make sure that we can fulfill the needs of our community. I'm not critical the DPW isn't doing that, so, yes, it's, looks like you're asking for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But again, you just stated that the other one was eighteen years old, um, you and I have talked in the past about that machine. Do we need a new one, if we're gonna continue doing big projects, yes, we need a new one, I know that, I'm convinced of that, but it's it's the discussion for the board and the residents at home, right? Um, and the other discussion that Mr. Manad and I have had was, the machine's eighteen years old, no, we're not getting rid of it. Um, we will still use it as a yard loader, right, we're gonna keep that down in the recycling.
Use it to recycle, so.
So that we're not using our new machine and.
Well, it just takes some of the burden off the, you don't use it, that loader's used for everything, that really is the strong of the town. We use that for snow, we use that for loading trucks, it's used for crushing, screening, you know, it's used for everything. Um, the swap shop, because it uses that to load our dumpsters when people bring in stuff to those, uh, you know, to the dumpsters there, metal or whatever. Um, so that machine's used for everything, so, um, by keeping the old one, it would be less, you know, it ain't gonna get hardly any use just using it on Fridays and Saturdays, so it's something that would, you know, could get a little more longevity out of it that way.
And you've already gotten estimates, you've already gotten estimates again, you went through that procurement, not that way.
Yeah, well, they, yes, this is.
Well, you've gone like three different bids on different things and.
Yep.
That's a pretty good number, two seventy-five, then I'm punching into my calculator, I'm not texting people at home, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, so. So, it's costing the taxpayers roughly thirteen thousand dollars a year, thirteen seven a year to own that machine for your last twenty years, I think that was a pretty good deal. It's pretty cheap for what that machine does for the town.
The John, I mean, the two top loaders out there, John Deere and Caterpillar, uh, we have currently the John Deere. And, you know, for the last twenty years, besides servicing, we really haven't had no major issues with that piece of equipment and it's been really, really good to the town.
And it looks like uh the last one.
Is for the water, that's the water.
Infrastructure on Nye Out.
Correct, which that one came up earlier than that kinda get.
So, this is another article that Mr. Manad was proposing, water infrastructure. Mr. Manad has an extensive list of several pipes. Um, and Ms. Silver just talked about the water resilience thing that was spending seventy-one thousand dollars on that plan. And I think that this is, this fits into the scope of our water infrastructure, um, without infrastructure, we're nothing as a community. Um, Nye Street, the water pipe on Nye Street is, I believe, a hundred and twenty-five years old, Mr. Manad, is that correct?
Nineteen sixteen.
Do I remember that?
Nineteen sixteen, nineteen sixteen, or nineteen eleven, one, there're two streets over there, that one and.
Call it over a hundred years old, right? And it's a good idea that maybe every seventy-five years we're replacing water pipe, right, that's what that, that's the so-called.
Should be, but.
Yep.
It's not the norm.
So, we talked about this several years back, um, of seeing what we would be capable of doing in-house um as a small DPW, um manned DPW that we have, so, this is gonna, the way I look at this um is, gentlemen, is this is a pilot program, see, see what we can do and what we can't do with our in-house staff. If this becomes something, and I just wanna let you know, Mr. Manad, because I know that we've put you to the test before and you've always climbed on top and and accomplished, however, I don't want at any point to overwhelm you with that burden. Um, because we are so small of a staff DPW, we only have a few, few guys in the DPW. If this becomes too overburdened some, um, at that point, you'll have to come back, we'll talk with the board and we'll we'll have the conversation with the board that we'll have to go out and every year, maybe we do it, outsource a rich street here, a street there just because it's too much for us to be doing, I mean, we can't. If if you, if you nail this project and it's great, then we we can continue on with this infrastructure, the water infrastructure projects. But again, we're challenging you, I feel you've been challenged numerous times in the past and you keep, you keep exceeding those expectations. And thank you very much, you and your staff, everybody there that's working there, including our water and sewer guys, because they they stopped doing what they're doing and come help us on the bigger DPW projects, just like, just like if we have a big water project, DPW will cross over the line and they'll come help us with that. So, we have a great team there, um, working as well. Um, I just don't want you to feel too overwhelmed that you have to be doing all this stuff and I and I understand that some people will say, well, it's your job, no, it's not, it's not, this this may perhaps.
Perhaps it is, but I mean, it's, again, if we're gonna do a lot of this type of work, you know, that's something in the future, I definitely have to think of a little more staff.
Right.
Because it would be impossible to take care of normal duties and do this type of work.
I totally get that, that's why I'm speaking of it tonight, so that there's no confusion out in TV land or anywhere else that, you know, this is, this is a truck, this is a pilot run. Let's see how we do. that, you know, this is a truck, this is a pilot run, let's see how we do. If everything goes well, we'll have further discussions to board with the water and sewer commissioners, so we'll figure that out as we move along. But I think this is a great test and a pilot for us to see what we can do with our all want of our infrastructure, because you did give me a copy several years back, and we do have several streets. I don't wanna say a lot, to be alone with several streets that need water infrastructure upgrades, and we need to get doing that. Because again, our community is only as good as its infrastructure. Mr. Deroche.
Now, is this the whole of the Nye?
Correct.
Okay, so that's Main Street, Wokum, and does it continue a little bit further?
It does continue, but I'm not sure if that one's as old as that one, so I'll have to look into that, see if we have to cross over, Wokum at that point.
And that money would come out of the?
Water surplus.
Water surplus.
That's correct, this is not taxation, this one is water surplus account. This is Article one, would be the same thing, water surplus, not taxation.
Okay.
So the seventy-one thousand dollars is water surplus, because that's water resiliency plan. And then Article four, that Mr. Manad is proposing, would again come from water surplus. And we have currently one point two, or one point three in surplus.
So just, just over a million here.
Yeah.
Is that a surplus, water surplus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One million nineteen.
Now, the Article three, with the backtrack, but that would come out of a, what, when would that come out?
It would be a general fund taxation.
Yeah, okay.
That's from the general fund, because it's used for the DBW. And Article two would be going back to the sewer surplus, just basically a refund, the sewer surplus. Gentlemen, I, I mean, Mr. Manad and Ms. Silver's here today, if you would like, we can approve these four articles or disapprove these four articles. What's the pleasure of the board, we don't need to have them back in next Wednesday where we go over articles with?
Not while they go through the finance committee for this as well, sorry, the finance committee?
Yeah, everything goes through the FinCon afternoon. Once we're done approving articles, we'll submit that with Ms. Hebert to the FinCon.
Okay.
And then you make, you know, presentation there or whatever.
Yeah, I know they have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, so most likely they'll have you on there.
Okay. This will be at night, though, we're trying to schedule ours during the day, because it's mostly, it's departments heads to town. So we ain't worried about, you know, the public, because they can watch it on TV, and we gotta deal with you folks, so we're trying to be considerate and getting this stuff done during the day. But if the board so chooses, we can go.
Mr. Chairman, I'm generally supportive of all of these, however, the one, one article that comes out of taxation, I think we, maybe just hold it to see how it plays into the other articles that are put in, you know what I mean? So we have a clear picture, I think the water surplus stuff, that's its own entity. And then just see how it all, everything fits.
So do you wanna make, you wanna make an motion to approve Article one, two, and four as presented?
Yeah, at least you know that, and then the other article, again, three, I think is fine, but.
Yep, it's nice, so move.
There's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we're just gonna, we'll discuss Article three, a little bit more the loader. And I think with respect to what Mr. Loan is saying, we need to see what else is coming in front and what money's available. I think that's the only reason for the whole one.
Yeah, that's right.
I think that's why we have a clear picture. That's right. Because there's numerous articles, fifteen of them, I'm sure there's a lot of monies.
I thought our other agenda had something on chapter ninety, but I don't see it on there.
Number two?
What's that?
Was the purchased berm machine and paver?
Oh, there it is, yep, good. So, Mr. Manad, again, has been doing some experimental work out there. And several years back, gentlemen, I spoke on DBW issues, because that's what I do, I'm pretty into DBW issues and infrastructure stuff in the town. And I get a lot of knowledge there, and I've been kind of banging the table for a paving machine for a while, and thank you to Mr. Manad for going out and finally getting one and finding a used one. We paid relatively short money for that one that we bought, was what, seven grand, seventy-five hundred bucks?
That was twelve thousand.
Twelve was for the used one?
Yep.
Twelve grand?
Yep.
Twelve grand for the used paving machine, and we got, what, a couple of years out of that puppy?
Two years, yep.
So, Mr. Manad, as everybody knows, Mr. Manad's been out, we've done some parking lot work, we did fire station number two, we did some main street improvements, patchwork on there, we did golf cart paths, we did golf cart parking lot areas with that machine. What else we do at that machine, we did a few things at that machine.
Yeah, a bunch of streets.
Bunch of patches out.
Yeah, Allen Street, Patchwork.
So it's, I kind of beat this drum around for a while, for several years, and again, I commend you, Mr. Manad, for finding that machine and getting something and experimenting with that, that was, again, a pilot experimental program. We've proved that we can do it, or you've proved that we can do it with your guys. I think that we've, we've learned a lot from getting the used machine. Mr. Manad has contacted the state on chapter ninety funds with Ms. Silver, and come to find out, we can actually purchase a paver with chapter ninety funds. So, I, I've been involved with this since the start, I think it's an infrastructure project that'll be continuous. I've talked about roads in our municipality and roads in other municipalities unacceptable with the taxation that we collect and what we pay out. I'd like to implement a program in Acushnet where we do more in-house, we've done that. I'd like to now implement a program where we're doing our own in-house internal paving of roads, not major interstates, bypass roads, Main Street, Middle Road. We probably leave some of them off and maybe still farm those out, because they're bigger projects, and I don't know if we're at that capability yet. But Mr. Manad's done some extraordinary work on roads now. He did Marion and Mason with our old machine, where we lost it, it broke down, the truck came off, we had to immediately go out and rent a machine, we did that. Mr. Manad completed those roads, those residents are extremely happy, got a lot of thumbs up on that project, a lot of people thanking, thanking Mr. Manad and the crew while they were out there. I'm gonna propose to the board tonight, I think Mr. Manad will endorse it, and we've had this conversation, is we're allowed to use chapter ninety funds to purchase a paver. I would like to purchase a brand-new paver for the DBW to utilize. Mr. Manad's, Ms. Silver ran some numbers, it's pretty extraordinary what we can do. When we did Hathaway Road, gentlemen, we paved, we outsourced it, just over one mile of road, cost us over four hundred thousand dollars for one road mile. Mr. Manad has done some.
It was four fifty, right, four hundred and fifty?
Okay, so it's more money, that's good, it makes my case even better, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do just over one road mile. We basically collect three hundred and ten, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in chapter ninety funds, is that correct, Mr. Manad?
Correct, yep.
So, when Mr. Manad and I and Ms. Silver sat down and we ran the numbers, it looks like in year one, we could purchase a paving machine and still complete one road mile of paving. So after one year, gentlemen, we will pay for that machine free and clear. And the nice part about it is, it's not being paid by tax dollars from the taxpayers of Acushnet. It's chapter ninety funds, I understand that's some of our money, but it's chapter ninety funds. So basically, in year one, that machine will pay for itself free and clear, and every year thereafter, we'll be able to pave roughly two and a half to three road miles a year versus three quarters, half to three quarters of one road mile now.
So, what, question?
Line two?
What does this cost, I mean, what is the new machine?
It's Mr. Manad's.
Well, I looked at a few, I'm still looking, you know, at a couple of them. It's, the one is two hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars is the one I'm looking at. And there's another one from Caterpillar, which the guy hasn't got back to me yet, so it's gonna be similar in that area, so.
Yeah, two hundred and thirty K, something like that.
Here's the deal, keep going, Dan, you know more than that, just lay it on him. Tell him about the deductions now. If we went with the Lee boy, that you gotta go over.
The guy would take the rental off, that was one of the stipulations, and we would get a trade-in value on our existing paver as well, so.
So what Mr. Manad just said, for those of you at home that can't hear him through his mask, he's basically saying that the paver's two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yep.
Sounds like a lot of money, I just explained the details of how that's gonna be paid off in year one, and we pay for the next nineteen years free and clear, right? And we're gonna do two and a half to three road miles. We paid seven thousand dollars, is this the one that was seven thousand bucks?
No, no, the rental was twelve. No, the rental was seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Okay, so seven thousand bucks.
For one month.
If we were to buy the paving machine from Ambrose, the company in New Hampshire that we rented from, they would deduct that from the purchase price, right?
Well, not deduct it, but take it off, because right now, we own that seven.
I know, but if we pay the bill and then we purchase the machine, you were saying that they would take that seven grand off the two twenty-one?
No, no, if, if right now, we own the seventy-two hundred plus the berm machine, which was twenty-four.
Okay, ten grand.
So he's basically taking that money and not, we don't have to pay that for renting it, that's.
Don't forgive that expenditure.
Right, correct.
So it's the same thing?
Yes, yes.
Six of one, half dozen of another, right? So it's, it's two twenty-one for the machine, they're gonna say, hey, guess what, the ten grand you owe me, just buy the machine for two twenty-one and I'll forgive that ten grand. So I'm, we're down to two eleven now, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're down to two eleven, plus we have the used machine, the one we bought for twelve thousand, and they're gonna give us a trade-in value, we get that value from them?
I do not, he's still working on that, so I'm working on that.
Are they still interested in it?
Yes.
So possibly, if we get some net value, whatever, we pay twelve grand for it, and we get four thousand bucks for it, right? We get thirty-three percent of the value back, right? We're down to two oh seven, two oh seven to purchase this machine, it's a screaming deal, the town owns it, we use it whenever we want, we're not worried about weathers, you know what I mean? We can get a lot of projects done with it, and that's the one that goes down to eight feet like we had before, and, but it expands out pretty wide too, right?
Fifteen-six, which would give you, if you did a two-lane pass, you'd get thirty-one feet rolls, or most of our roads are less than that. That's a problem with our other one, it only goes two from eight feet to twelve feet, and a lot of our streets are twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet wide, so.
Thirds and sec to seams, and that looks like crap.
Yeah.
So there's, there's, it's, I think now's the time to do it, while we're renting that machine and we have that deal on the hook, we don't wanna lose the ten grand. I don't wanna lose it.
Do you need a motion?
If the board thinks it's a good idea, I think it's a great idea.
Make a motion to purchase the berm machine and paver with chapter ninety funds.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
A lot of walking trails.
Well, you can use it for that, you can use it for, like I said, the golf course, I'll tell you, they, they need a ton of, you know, the cop paths, we did one last year for them, but I'm sure they're gonna need some more done in the future.
There's a, there's a, there's a lot of talent in the town of Acushnet, and we owe it to our residents to stop paving these roads and do a better job of maintaining these roads, because a lot of these side streets, you know it, I know it, I think everybody knows it, that they're falling apart, and that's unacceptable, it really is, I mean, people are paying a good, good amount of taxes, and we need to set an example saying, we're there for you, we're gonna take care of the community, we're gonna invest in infrastructure. That's exactly what this board just did, go get them.
One more thing.
And Dan, thank you, and we thanked the chief before for his great work, but thank you and the guys, and Ms. Silver, and Ann, and everybody at the DBW, in the office, out of the office, whatever it is, I mean, you guys, you never squabbled about doing the job, you didn't say it's not part of my job description. Just go out and you do it, and you do a great job at doing it, and you really, you really try to help everybody out, no matter what department it is, park department, council on age, and whatever it is, golf course, whatever, you're always, school department, you're out there paving, doing things for them as well, so. Thank you, and keep up the good work, and keep that team spirit, and I think we're gonna be in good shape moving forward.
Thank you. One more thing, Cap, we had, if we're gonna get our own paver, we did have PJ Keating actually contracted to do Myrtle and all them streets, so that's one thing that we're not gonna, you know, if we're gonna get our own paver, I think we should kind of do that one in-house.
So that was the other twist, I apologize, Mr. Manad, I had it, I have it written down right here, but I have so much in my head that I could just go right out of my head with a lot of this stuff, because I've been doing this for a long time now with you, and I just drawed out a bunch of stuff down. It was well over a year ago, we awarded PJ Keating the asphalt, the paving projects on Myrtle, Homestead, Wilbur, and Conduit. Mr. Deroche, you were part of that?
Balls Con.
That's correct. And right up the street from EMS and police station, those three last streets, and Conduit goes this way. And because of the conditions there with DEP and the town issues, they haven't fulfilled that obligation in over one year. So under the law, we're widely within our realm to withdraw those contracts, is that correct?
Correct.
So what I'm, what I, what I would ask the board to do is, that, that total for those three and, for four streets, Wilbur, Homestead, and Conduit.
We had a hundred and forty-one thousand.
That's what, that's what it was awarded, that's what the contract said that they would do, the bid came in for a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Mr. Manad and I ran some numbers on that, based on what he's done, it's gonna be a total reclamation, correct? Like you did Marion and Mason, that means just rip the whole road right up, put a new subgrade, I mean, it's asphalted, so it's done, good for another twenty-five, thirty years. Those people, we talked about this back in two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, and when I said we were looking at the payment management plan, we owe it to those people to get out there and fix those roads, because those roads are horrible, and nobody deserves to do that. So what we're looking to do is, it's a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, gentlemen, I think Mr. Manad ran some numbers, and would you come up seventy-five, eighty grand to do those?
Roughly, yep.
In-house, if we got a, if we have a paver?
Yep.
So right there alone is sixty thousand bucks, again, taking off that two-ten number that we were talking about, so now we're down to one fifty for that paver. We keep talking, that machine's free a lot earlier than what I said, so is there a motion to rescind that bid on chapter ninety funds for those four streets?
From PJ Keating concerning those four streets, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, all right, thanks, Dan, you're welcome.
Is that right?
Yep.
You got everything?
You should be, I think so.
Get to work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you so much. Town administrators report?
Um, I just had one thing.
Veteran's Day flyover?
Yeah, so we received a letter from Juan Cormier, who's the veteran's agent for the town, basically going through, you know, similar story that we've heard from a lot of events. Due to COVID, it's, it's made the event a lot more difficult, so looking at Veterans Day, what he's looking to propose is having a helicopter flyover. He, in the letter said, he talked to the Coast Guard for their availability and consideration. There would be ample parking at Pope Park and the Veterans Memorial Park to allow many residents the opportunity to view this type of activity. And he's just basically looking to see if the selectmen are on board, obviously, this could be canceled if there's an emergency that arises or if the weather's inclement, but just trying to do something for the veterans on Veterans Day.
So no Veterans Day celebration at Pope Park? Veterans are welcome?
Yes.
To go? But there'll be no, from what the veteran's agent's saying here in Acushnet, there'll be no ceremonies due to the lack of, I think, the back pipers and things like that, those folks that come and things of that nature, it's extremely, it's extremely unfortunate.
It's also the gathering of people, that's fine, it goes against protocol right now.
So if, if you're up for him pursuing the helicopter flyover, he'd look into that, and people could still go, stay socially distant, wear a mask, and watch the helicopter flyover to celebrate Veterans Day.
Yep. Do, is he still planning to do the helicopter flyover at, what is it, seven-thirty or eleven?
Um, yeah, I don't have to go in here at the time, but I can get it and we can put it up on the website, so everyone can know about it.
Okay.
Great.
Yep, that's right.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right.
And gentlemen, just as a reminder, Ms. Hebert, we scheduled an executive session for tomorrow, Wednesday at five PM, a joint meeting with the Board of Health, executive session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that here at time off?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, oh, I think we have it as a, it's an executive session, I think there's a Zoom as well for the Board of Health.
Okay, that's fine, whatever.
So we can all join in, yeah.
Is, we notified town council?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And our next meeting, November third, is Election Day, a big day.
Well, the next meeting we'll have will be next Wednesday.
For Articles?
For Articles, I don't know if you want to set a time?
Yeah, we're just.
That, everyone's.
I didn't know, if you communicated, whatever, during the day would work out, anywhere between, you know, nine and?
Nine, eleven.
Next Wednesday?
This Wednesday or? No, next Wednesday, twenty-eighth. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, whatever.
Is there a time that's better for everyone?
Earlier the better, my case.
Nine AM?
Nine AM, yeah.
Nine AM, good for you, nine, that's first of all on? Nine AM? Articles?
Articles and.
And you said, because there's not a lot for Articles, you and I had the discussion that maybe we would do, Merrill Lee wanted to come in and do twenty-minute. And you said, because there's not a lot for Articles, you and I had the discussion that maybe we would do, Merrill Lee wanted to come in and do a twenty-minute update on the, give us a briefing on that MS four permitting stuff so we can get the board and the public understanding what this all means for the town of Acushnet.
Yep, absolutely.
So she can come, we can throw her on the agenda as well. I don't think Articles will take us that long.
Great.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So Lou.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I'll adjourn.